Person up to 10 minutes for the entire section. Do we have, Kevin, anybody on to oral communications?
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, we have Andrea D'Amico. Andrea?
Why don't you, while she's coming up, Kevin, why don't you do a roll call, please, for me real quick?
Certainly.
Interrupt you just one second.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Washington County Board of Commissioners also meeting as the Board Directors for Clean Water Services and all other county services districts is meeting this regular session, January 23rd, 2024. Commissioner Treese?
Here.
Commissioner Willey?
Here.
Commissioner Vi?
Present.
Vice Chair Rogers?
Here. All right, now oral communications, please.
Hi, my name is Andrea D'Amico. I live at 13090 Southwest Vandermost. And we've spoken to you guys for the last two years regarding ordinance 882. We were just notified this afternoon that the meeting changed from 6:30 to, from 10 o'clock, or from 6:30 to 10 o'clock in the morning on the 30th. We just wanted to express our concern about it. We have been kind of since the 12th trying to plan this and without people being able to now come and speak due to work schedules, et cetera, we were just curious what the sudden change was all about.
Thank you. I'll get an answer for it in just a minute.
Okay, great, thank you.
Is there anybody else, Kevin?
Would anyone else in the auditorium tonight wish to testify for up to two minutes on any county-related topic? Not seen one in the room. Would anyone online wish to testify for up to two minutes on any county-related topic? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function? Not seen any hands, Mr. Vice Chair.
Can someone from LUT come up and explain that particular issue real quickly? I wouldn't do that normally, but I know that there's a lot of people who might be interested.
Vice Chair Rogers, I think it's more appropriate that Clerk Moss and I address that. Your board, your board had discussed the meeting time and had determined to have the 30th as a daytime meeting, as this evening is our one meeting a month for an evening meeting.
So, what we do, I don't know if you heard that, but we have one meeting a month at night, and that's tonight, and it's all because of weather and the holidays. So, we will hear it at 10:00. I think that your message has been well heard, that we completely understand it, so, thank you. Kevin, again, no one online? All right, let's move down into the consent agenda. These are routine items that we pass with one motion. You're going to see if anyone's following along on the agenda, that there is a host of them. There's like 27 of them, and the reason for that is that we didn't meet the last week or two, as we thought we might somewhere in there, because of the bad weather. And so, we're here tonight. These are a routine items, again, we'll take a motion and we'll accept them with that motion.
So moved.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. Any discussion at all? All in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Okay, I count four, so there is no opposition. It does pass. The next item is Boards and Commissions. We have a number of those, and I'll turn to Tanya for your introduction of the item.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. Your Board has previously reviewed the materials in the packet, which are several Board and Commission appointments. The action before your Board from staff is to move approval of Boards and Commissions with the staff recommendations for items D1 through D4 and D5 to D8. D6 to D8, excuse me, that was D6 to D8.
D9.
Oh, D9. Okay, I'm one off on each of these. Thank you Clerk Moss for keeping me accountable.
So, what we'll do is pass those with one motion is the number of appointments we're making. Is there any discussion at all, or do we have one motion?
Motion to approve items D1, 2, 3, and 4, 6, 7, 8, and 9.
So moved.
Is it a second?
Your second.
All right, any discussion at all? All in favor then, if you'd raise your right hand, so we see it. That's four, okay, so there won't be any opposition. So, that brings us to the item that was not in that, it was adopted by laws of the Advisory Council on Racial Equity.
Vice Chair Rogers, we've already had a staff report on this item. We will not be doing a staff report this evening, so the action in front of your Board is motion to approve the bylaws as previously reviewed by your Board.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Sorry, we didn't get, we were all prepared to take the motion, but I saw you moving. So, all right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussions at all? All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, 4:00, it does pass. So, we're now down into a presentation. I, oh, most suggested we have that on another day, because I would like to give you two hours, because I like this topic, but you got 30 minutes, I'm sorry, at night.
Vice Chair Rogers, if I could get that much time, that'd be amazing, but, but that's okay, let's just stick with 30.
We may not be there for the entire two hours, but you have.
That's okay, I'm still going to talk about, I would still get to talk about something that I am very passionate about and I very, very much enjoy, so. For the record, my name is Christine Adams-Wanberg. I am the Washington County Auditor, and I am here to present on the County Financial Policies Audit. This audit was publicly released on December 19th, and the report is available on our website, which is amazing. Okay, little preview of coming attractions for the presentation. I'm going to give you a little bit of background in terms of the audit, the scope and the objectives. I'll talk about the audit findings and the recommendations. During the presentation, I will kind of dovetail off a little bit to give management their opportunity to provide a response, although their formal response has been included in the audit report on the website. And then, of course, try to answer any questions that you may have. Okay, little bit of background on the audit, a lot of words there. This was a very interesting audit. I can tell you that in my career as a performance auditor of over 25 years, this is the third time I've actually ever been requested to come in for an audit, so it was very uncommon, but very welcome. The CFO, who we have in the back, requested this audit. Interestingly, this was like almost immediately after I got sworn in by 12 minutes, where he requested this audit to occur. So, nice way to start as being the auditor on getting to audit something that you personally have a lot of interest in, and somebody's asking you to come in, which is great. The whole point of this audit was basically to do kind of a gap analysis between what we have as the county, countywide financial policies, and then compare those to what the recommended practices are for the Government Finance Officers Association. GFOA is a great organization. I know that things have come before your Board before with regard to best practices or what GFOA recommends, or research that they have done, but really great organization, and they have great criteria. I also wanted to check the general funds reserve calculation for the current fiscal year, make sure it was according to policy, and then how it was documented. Okay, audit findings. Okay, we're going to jump right in. This is the big one, the big kahuna of the audit. So, basically, we really kind of need a set of complete policies that would better help us manage our government finances. And what I'm talking about is really those countywide policies, the ones that are kind of those high-level county standards. I'm not necessarily talking about fund-specific policies. So, for example, I'm not talking about a fund policy for MISTIP or Facilities or Fleet, just really those countywide standards that you as a Board basically kind of direct to say, hey, as a county, this is the direction that we're going to be going. And I do make a distinction there between kind of, in the graphic, what a policy is, which is the high-level stuff, what a procedure is, which is kind of the lower-level nitty-gritty of how you do it, and then how you link those procedures together to get your process. So, the county actually has five countywide financial policies. I will tell you of the five policies, our investment policy, thumbs up, loving the investment policy, it did really, really well. With regard to the other policies, they definitely have some room for improvement, and I know we can reach that. There are also seven other areas where we actually didn't have any policies. There are areas where GF Way essentially says, hey, you know, for your government, your size and complexity, these are policies as a government you should likely have. I'm going to give you, and I know this is really a little bit tiny, it's a little bit better in the report. So, if you look over here, this is the table where we did the assessment of the policies. If you look at the green box, that's the investment policy. Green light, excellent, go to town on that one. If you're looking at the blue boxes, those are the areas where we have current policies as a county, countywide financial policies, but there need to be improvement. Let me give you a little bit of an example. The current countywide grants policy is essentially, has two provisions to it. One is that if you're going to apply for a grant, that you have to let the CAO's office know, and the second part being, if it's over a certain threshold, that you have to come ask the Board. It doesn't have any other parameters in it, it doesn't have anything that says, hey, you know, as a county, we're not going to take on or basically go after grants where we have to backfill all the money at the end of the grant, we have to support it long-term. Or, we're not going to take on grants where we are going to basically use that grant money to support, you know, long-term permanent employees. They have to be, you know, if we're going to take on a grant, we're going to have ones that support essentially limited-term or limited-duration employees. So, just as an example. The orange is basically the areas where we don't have policies, but there are best practices to recommend that we do. And as you can see from there, there are a variety of ones there with regard to capital, with regard to economic development. Now, economic development might be one of those that you might want to think about. We have a fairly new program in economic development. If that's something the Board wants to continue with after a certain period of time, you might want to consider basically instituting some economic development policies. Okay, the other two parts of that was, I did look at the general funds fund balance calculation, it was according to policy, it looked like it pretty much should. There is some documentation that needs to be done on that, in terms of making sure that, you know, we have all the information, we know where all the information came from. It obviously comes from our financial system, but making sure we have the exact numbers. And then, the other internal control I did look at was basically in the Budget Office, their software, they don't have any sort of policies with regard to access permissions. So, just another internal control there that is something that we should have, and is a best practice. All right, the audit recommendations, the big one. Basically, let's improve our financial policies, let's develop new ones that reflect the GFOA recommended criteria. I think one of the things that I've seen in this audit, as well as other audits, is, you know, our county has grown a lot, we have grown in complexity, our funding has grown in complexity, we're not the county we were 20 years ago. And the fact that we don't have policies or our policies are not quite where they need to be, needs to be a project where we get to the point where we need to. Second, document the general fund reserve calculation methodology in the process, and then obviously, you know, develop a written user access policy for the Budget Office's software. So, before I hand it over to the CAO, I do want to express just a really, a great deal of appreciation to Greg Munn for asking for this audit and the cooperation of county departments, really appreciated all the interesting questions they gave me, all the advice, all the information in a timely manner. I'm going to, I don't know that I can totally speak for Greg on this one, but this was certainly an area that Greg and I had talked about before I even got sworn in, and we both kind of had a gut feeling about where we were like, you know, I think there's some areas in there where we're kind of not as, where we should be as a county. And that was great to have Greg make that recommendation to me, that basically say, hey, why don't you come in and take a look? Give me your unbiased opinion about where the land is, where we're landing. So, I would say it was a very collegial audit, and I'm really encouraged by the work that Finance is already doing to address the recommendations. So, now I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, and congratulations on the completion of your first official audit. I know you reported out to the Board and the community at the end of December, but this is actually the first official audit. The findings within our Auditor's Audit actually align with the work that Mr. Munn is leading as our Chief Financial Officer through budget transformation and fiscal policy procedure transformation. I believe that this audit will serve as a great foundation point for us to launch from as the Finance Department starts to go through the development of these policies. The CFO's goal is to actually have these policies and procedures completed within 12 months. That is an ambitious goal, I will say, in the management response letter. We are, did put 18 months to provide a little bit of cushion. This is an incredible, incredibly important piece, especially as we have seen, and it was spoken to, just the changes in our, in our county, and as we see changes in our workforce, and start to embark on transition from our current enterprise resource planning system to a new, new system, it's important to have these policies and procedures in place. So, thank you for speaking to the positive, I'll say tenor in working conditions of this audit, and I would completely agree with that, and thank you for the Auditor's Office work on this.
I won't hold you to 12, it's okay.
We like ambitious goals.
If you do it, awesome. With that, I would just like to ask, do you have any particular questions of me and about the audit?
I don't have a question, but I just want to say thank you for, for this information. I want to extend my appreciation to Greg, and also to you for the collaborative work here, and using the Audits, the Auditor's Office to, to, and I know this is your philosophy, is to improve how we work in a cooperative manner, and I, I just want to say kudos, and thank you very much for, for that work.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
No, I just wanted to echo what Pam said. Thank you, Christine, for just the positive attitude that you bring to it, and, and certainly the collaborative part of it, like Pam said. Greg, thank you very much for calling this out right up front, getting first in the queue there in the audit process. And, no, these are absolutely critical parts of the county and certainly the county finances, so thank you very much for that, good job.
Thank you so much.
Great presentation. I agree everything that's been said, it sounds like Greg is a go-getter. Today, we just gave a four thumbs up for one of the reserves policy that he brought forward, which had a whole bunch of reds, so way to get ahead and really think forward, so good work for both of you, and thank you for putting Washington County out there, Greg.
Yeah, I was, I was very pleased to be able to give that, that policy a very preliminary sniff test, so to speak, as it was being developed. So, yeah, just incredibly encouraged by, by the work that Greg is doing. Love the timeline, I know that's very ambitious, if you don't quite make it, totally get it, but, but the fact that the recommendations have been so embraced, I think, has been just a wonderful thing, and anybody, you know, Greg and I got to nerd out over, over being budget geeks and audit geeks and everything like that, so that was definitely super satisfying as well, so.
My comment was, is, that I do work similar to yours, as you know, in my background. It's a issue that we always look at in every audit, and it's what we call a tone at the top. And I can tell you, the tone at the top in your organization is very refreshing. Not here to dictate what you audit, how you audit, or what your findings are, but the issue that I would like to dictate is that we always work in a collaborative fashion, and that we find value, because frankly, to spend money for elected audits and auditors only has value to the public if there is some value that comes out of it. And I can sense already, it's, it's just a new, refreshing day in Washington County, so I appreciate it and look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate the positive feedback. It, it has been my pleasure and very exciting for this to be the first audit.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to move you from the 16th to tonight.
You guys had much bigger issues to deal with than me, so.
Well, you got two CPAs who don't think so, we think this is wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, this is great. All right, well, thank you very much. We're going to move on to public hearings. The first is a, to approve a resolution and order increasing assessments in the Metzger Park Local Improvement District. So, I will open that public hearing. Is there going to be a staff report? I see Carl on, okay.
Good evening, Commissioners. I am Laurel Brown, the Director of Facilities, Fleet, and Parks, and with me here today is Carl Schweitzer, who will be providing the staff report detailing this year's annual, maximum annual assessment for the Metzger Park Local Improvement District.
Thank you, Laurel. Good evening, Commissioners. So, today's purpose is to review the need for an increase to the maximum annual assessment of the Metzger Park Local Improvement District, to review the process for increasing the maximum assessment, and for your consideration on approval of the resolution order to do so. So, before we start, just some general information about Metzger Park. It is a seven-acre park in urbanized, unincorporated Washington County, near Washington Square. You can see on this map, the little red star indicates the general location. It was deeded to the county in 1921 for park purposes. The Metzger Park Advisory Board was formed in 1972, and the Local Improvement District was formed in 1975. So, this is a map of the Metzger Park Local Improvement District boundary. It incorporates about 3,800 properties, typically commercial, residential, multifamily residential, with some government properties in there as well, and that big green blob in the middle is Metzger Park. So, the Local Improvement District that was formed in 1975 started out with an initial assessment of $27,000. It has been increased four times since then, in '88, 1995, 2002, and most recently in 2019. In 2019, the assessment was raised to $158,955, and tonight, we're proposing to increase the maximum annual assessment to $318,000 for next fiscal year, fiscal year 2425. So, the need for the increase is to address the increased cost of goods, services, labor, and administrative costs since the last assessment increase. It will allow us to maintain our quality service delivery, especially operations and maintenance. It will continue to fund capital replacement of major park components and systems, and the new proposed maximum annual assessment will no longer require a general fund contribution to make the Metzger Park budget whole and to provide service delivery.
Before we move on to the next slide, I just want to take the Board back to our budget deliberations last year for this proposed fiscal year 2024. As we continue to deep dive into our budget, really look at the costing of services, Metzger Park was one of the parks that came to light. A local improvement district typically has all of the funds for operations and management of that district paid directly from that local improvement district, also called a LID. In Washington County, based on how the resolution and order was structured, not all of those costs were paid and funded by the local improvement district. So, this assessment role in this action tonight ensures that all costs borne by Metzger Park are funded within that local improvement district, and not through the general fund or countywide property tax revenue. So, I just wanted to take us back to some context of why we're here today, and also that more significant than a normal assessment role or assessment period increase in the budget.
Thank you for that. So, the proposed increase will provide additional funding to address the increased cost of materials and supplies, but again, fundamentally, it will be to replace the, the amount that the general fund was contributing to the Metzger Park Operations and Maintenance budget, and that will offset the cost of personnel and administrative costs that had been borne by the general fund. So, the process that we undertook with the community to announce the potential increase to the maximum assessment started in September, where we did a mailing to all the addresses in the Local Improvement District. You can see an image of that on the right of your screen. On the front page of that, we announced that there was going to be ongoing discussion about raising the maximum assessment and inviting people to attend the October Metzger Park Local Improvement District Advisory Board Meeting, where we'd be talking about the subject in depth. So, then we did that in, at the October Advisory Board Meeting, and then, two days later, I presented that same information to the Community Participation Organization 4M, CPO 4M. Then, in November, we produced the letters that were mailed to all of the property owners within the LID, and those started arriving in mailboxes on December 1st. So, a little bit more about the letters. The notifications are prescribed by Chapter 3.20 of the Washington County Code of Ordinances. Notifications were sent, again, to all the property owners in the Local Improvement District, but we took it a step further and made special notification to large commercial landowners, as well as all the taxing agencies that overlap the Metzger Park Local Improvement District Advisory Board. They were notified of the public hearing, and notified on how to submit written testimony prior to the public hearing, and the written testimony that we received was attached to your packet for tonight's meeting. So, if you were to approve the resolution and ordinance tonight, the next steps in the process would be to process that through the assessment and taxation, and then the new assessment would start after July 1, and then be sent out on people's assessment, or I'm sorry, tax bills in October, and the first revenue collection from the maximum assessment would happen in November of 2024. And so, with that, the staff is requesting that you approve the resolution in order to increase the, increase the fiscal year 2425 maximum annual assessment of the Metzger Park Local Improvement District.
Any questions of staff before we take public comments?
Yeah, Carl, I'm looking at the attachments that were in the calendar invite tonight, and I'm just kind of scanning down them, obviously, there was some not support. So, how many of those did you actually receive? I didn't ask, I didn't count them.
You, you have all of the letters that we, all of the written correspondence that we received, and I believe that was about 10, 10 written letters. I also had a few phone calls, and all of those, the character of those was requesting clarification on the letter.
So, and then I scanned down through all of the lots that are going to be assessed in the numbers, and they're obviously doubling, and then I paid particular attention to the ones that were pretty big numbers. Yeah, and I knew it was Washington Square, but I didn't know, because it just said parcel lot. So, has there been any feedback at all from the big players in this?
We received no communication from the large commercial property holders or any of the overlapping taxation districts.
So, I would have to guess that, based on those numbers, I mean, I saw lots of them that were $100 to $200 and all of that, and then you get into the several thousand dollars, so I guess I'm trying to get a scope of the majority contributors to this versus the minority, and I'd have to think, what is there, maybe 10 or 15 of them that are going to pay probably 75% of this increase?
60% of the assessment is paid by residential properties, 40% is paid for by commercial And so, of the commercial property holders, we sent special letters to the 10 largest commercial property holders, and that would include the Washington Square owners, indicating that we'd be willing to meet with them if they had any specific questions or concerns about that, and we did not receive any communication back from them.
Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure that we were maximizing our communication, so thank you very much for that.
I have a quick question. Carl, thank you for your presentation. This is a bit of a wonky topic to follow, I feel like, when I was reading the material, but I am, if I'm following you correctly, and I think I am, but I still don't understand the, the need for this significant increase, and I'm looking at Slide 7, and I was hoping I would follow along when you were presenting, but I think I got lost. The number is here, I see at the bottom-
at the bottom, the actual approval increase you're requesting, the amount, but then these other number on that side, how do they add up? Which column are we adding?
What was the general fund subsidy last year?
It was a it was about $98,000 plus the cost of of labor, which was approximately $56,000.
About $130,000, $40,000 of that increase was.
Actually, if I read it correctly, Roy, we're basically doubling it. It was $158,000. This year is $318,000. This year, so basically, we're doubling this and removing all of the general fund.
Yes. And and I didn't, Commissioner Phi, I didn't linger on this table, but I can quickly give give this some more time. So you can see there what our expenditures were for this current fiscal year, and then what we are anticipating them to be next year. And then the third column, where it says change, that is the increased or the difference between those. And those numbers on the right had been historically paid for out of the general fund contribution. And instead, we're removing the general fund contribution and replacing those with local improvement district dollars. And in order to meet that new $159,000 cost, we basically are doubling the the maximum assessment.
Thank you, Carl. I appreciate it.
So one quick question, Carl. Is so is there an inflation index in this thing so that next year, is there going to be an automatic inflation kicker? Or is this a flat line until we do it again?
That's a great question. I would love that if there was an opportunity for us to have an automatic indexing that would raise this. But we've worked with county council on that, and there is not a way to make that happen. The way that that it's prescribed is that the board has to adopt the maximum assessment every year. So we can make changes every year, but we can't index the the cost of of the maximum assessment. I wish we could.
To maybe answer that question also in a different way, staff, do not foresee any within the foreseeable future significant increase in the assessment rate. I say significant outside of inflationary costs, unless there would be significant capital improvements or increased level of service to the park.
Sorry, but maybe a different way. It's really not the county's lid. It we organized it in terms of administering, but it's the public in that area. It's their LID. So if they came to us collectively and said, we want to double it again, because we want to do a whole bunch more improvements, that would be up to them. It's not not the, I'm looking at people on my right and left, they're not not from, you know, the Cedar Hills, Cedar Hills, Cedar Hills area. They're not from Hillsboro. They're not from Beaverton, the lower. They're not paying it. It's for the people in that particular local improvement district. So though we don't at the county suspect that there's going to be large increases, there could be if that advisory committee, those folks who live there, they wanted something more. And I, when I read those letters, people said, you should use your money better. It's not our money. It's theirs. We're just the, I guess, the trustee or the fiduciary who's taking their money and providing the service they've requested. That's all we're doing. So it's it's not like it's a tax, other than they were being subsidized in the past. Because of financial situations at the county, the board said, well, we can't, we can't subsidize it. I can't take Hillsboro money and put it into a park down in, happens to be my my area. We can't do that anymore. So that's the reason. Anyway, I think we're laboring.
I perhaps we are. But when I reflect back on the on the letters that were provided in the comment, it was clear that there the understanding of this complex situation was not complete, you know, in terms of what the increase and and why, as you just articulated. So I think going on record here with the commission is really important to say it one more time, that this is this, the point of this is to make sure that people that don't live in that lid are paying into it through the general fund. So that's, that's, I think, important to to get out there. So thank you for this work. And I know it probably wasn't real easy to do. So I appreciate the all the effort.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have one last question, I think, that was asked about the inflation, and then the condition index came in in the conversation. And I'm trying to figure out where, does this not qualify, or will this not be on the facilities condition index?
I think those are two separate indexes. The facility condition index will include the Metzger Park, but I think we're talking about the, like, an inflationary index in in.
But this will still be on the facility. Okay, good.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. We'll excuse you from the table, and I'll turn to Kevin. Is there anyone in the audience signed up or anyone online?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I did not see anyone sign up in the room. Would anyone in the auditorium wish to provide public comment on this public hearing? As you've heard, the staff report. Not seen anyone raising a hand or coming forward. Anyone online via Zoom wish to provide public comment on this public hearing? As you've heard the staff report before you, give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seen any hands, Mr. Vice Chair.
Great. Thank you so much. All right. Is there?
They're going to close the public hearing?
Yeah, let's close that public hearing.
No, all right. No more? All right. I'll close the public hearing.
Make a motion to approve the maximum annual assessment of $318,000 for fiscal year 2425 for the Metzger Metzger Park Local Improvement District.
Second. And Commissioner Trice was the second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. That's four oh. No use asking for any dissension. Thank you very much. And thank you, Carl, for your efforts down there. All right. The next public hearing is Consider Proposed Ordinance 897. For those of you who might be online or viewing from the audience, you're going to hear that we're going to continue this after hearing a bit. So staff report. I've opened the hearing.
Mr. Vice Chair will have the motion to read by title first.
That's true. We can't do that one. All right. I've never done this before, Brad. Yeah, I'm speeding along.
So move. I'm I'm doing everything I can to help you, Roy.
All right.
Second.
It's been moved. Second, we read by title only. If I'm in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you have any pose, okay. Is that Brad, or is that, I think?
Brad.
Yep.
All jays for that.
It's all right.
Ordinance number 897, an ordinance amending the Comprehensive Framework Plan for the Urban Area Rural slash Natural Resource Plan and Bull Mountain Community Plan to reflect the River Terrace 2.0 urban growth boundary expansion area.
Thank you very much. We're open. We'll staff report.
Good evening, Vice Chair Rogers and Commissioners. Teresa Cherniak, Principal Community Planner. Todd Borkowitz will give the presentation.
Good evening, Vice Chair Roberts and Commissioners. I'm Todd Borkowitz, Senior Planner with with Community Planning with the Department of Land Use and Transportation. This evening will be continuing Ordinance Number 897, which would formally transfer the Metro UGB Expansion for Tigard's River Terrace 2.0 from the rural to the urban area. So to recap, Ordinance Number 897 proposes to amend the county planning documents to reflect this UGB expansion. Metro approved this expansion through a UGB land exchange in May 2023. The Director of the Department of Land Conservation and Development granted final approval. The board held its first hearing on this ordinance on October 3. During that meeting, the county received testimony opposing the ordinance, and the board voted to continue the hearing to November 7, so that staff could provide a full response to the testimony. On November 7, the board continued the ordinance on to January 16, and then did the last week's inclement weather. The ordinance was postponed until today. So here's approximately 500-acre River Terrace 2.0 metro UGB expansion area in green. It's adjacent to Roger Rogers Road, south of Shoals Ferry Road, and north of Beef Bend Road. Staff does not agree with the testimony letter about potential impacts of the proposed ordinance on the level of protection for Gulf Five natural resources. However, we believe it would be better to delay the Ordinance 897 until after the ordinance on significant natural resources adopted is adopted later this year. Staff proposes, therefore, to continue Ordinance 897 to a date certain in November 2024, which would maintain our focus on completing the county's Gulf Five program update. We shared this proposal with staff from the city of Tigard, who indicated that they had no concerns with delaying this ordinance. Wendy Callington and Andrea D'Amico, who authored the testimony letter opposing this ordinance, support this proposed continuance. So therefore, we recommend that the board conduct the public hearing today on Ordinance 897 and continue the hearing to November 19, 2024, to allow for completion of the county's Significant Natural Resources Program. And that concludes our presentation. We're happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Questions? Nope. 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 All right. None. Kevin, do we have anyone signed up?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Is anyone in the auditorium wish to provide public comment on this public hearing? As you've heard, the staff report before you. Raise your hand, come forward. Not seen anyone in the room. Would any members online via Zoom wish to provide public comment on this public hearing? As you've heard, the staff report. Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seen any hands, Mr. Vice Chair.
All right, then. I was just kidding about, this is my first time up here. I think it's about my 10th or 11th time serving as Vice Chair. So what we're going to do is close tonight's public portion, but not the hearing. And we're going to take a motion to continue.
Make a motion to make a motion to continue the hearing to November 19, 2024, to allow for completion of the upgrade of the county's Significant Natural Resources Program.
Second.
Did you catch them, Kevin? Both the, okay. All right. All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. That's four zero. Okay, it's continued. Thank you very much. So now we come to the highlight of tonight's meeting. Annually, we rotate to the position of Vice Chair, and the designee for the year 2024 is Commissioner Phi, and she is ready to go. And I would propose that we have a motion to take that action so we can get on with it.
So moved?
Second.
Moving second. All unanimously say aye. Yay. Okay. Congratulations.
Saying you, not I.
You, yeah, not I, you. All right. We look forward to your service. That'd be great. All right. Now, we're now into the public comment period again. This is a five-minute period for those who want to speak to us on an item. Anybody signed up?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I did not see anyone sign up in the room. Would anyone in the auditorium wish to provide comment for up to five minutes on any county-related topic? Not seen anyone raise their hand or coming forward. Would anyone online via Zoom wish to provide public comment on any county-related topic? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seen any hands, Mr. Vice Chair.
All right. We'll close the public communication portion, board announcements. Tony, do you want to do the honors of giving us our meeting schedule? Because I know you're over there chatting with Brad, and I just want to get you caught in the middle of all that.
Thank you for the laughter, Commissioner Rogers. And I'm buying some time so I can get to the schedule. So we are on a busy 2024. So Tuesday, January 30, the board will convene for a work session at 9:00 AM, and then a board meeting following at 10:00 AM. On Wednesday, January 31, and I will let your board and the community know that we are currently working through some potential scheduling challenges. More information will be shared with the board tomorrow regarding a Public Safety and Justice County delegation meeting at 5:30 PM. The board will will convene on Tuesday, February 6, in a work session at 9:00 AM, and a board meeting following at 10:00 AM. Thursday, February 8, Board of County Commissioners also serves as the Clean Water Services Board of Directors, and they will have a training starting at 9:00 AM. Tuesday, February 13, as your board previously discussed in roundtable, Tuesday, February 13, board meeting is canceled. We will then continue through the month. February 20, work session at 9:00 AM, board meeting at 10:00 AM, and then round out the month of February, meeting starting in the afternoon for work session at 2:00 PM, and board meeting at 6:30 PM.
Thank you so much. Anything else to come tonight? All right. Motion to adjourn then.
So move.
Second.
Motion been second. If I'm in favor, raise your right hand. We are adjourned. Good evening to everyone.